Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Titusville City Council Meeting of November 12th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. We have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. Clerk, please read the procedures for speaking.
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items.
Thank you, Clerk. Please join me in a moment of silence and please give some thought to our veterans and especially the ones that did not return, so. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Approval of minutes?
Mayor, if I could, before we get to the agenda, I've got a couple of agenda adjustments that I'd like you and council to consider. First is item 9A, which is relating to ordinance number 38, 2019, fire alarms, which is an addendum. Staff request that you table this item until 26 November 2019.
Okay. Need a motion?
Move to table the item to November?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Do I have a second? I have a second for Member Jordan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I did it, finally. Any opposed? Same sign. Passes unanimously.
Yes, sir. The second item I'd like to ask for your consideration is item 9A. Staff would like to move that item after you approve the minutes in between 4A and item 5, which is special recognition and presentations. So requesting 9A to be moved before 5.
And that's where we are. That's, we're just on...
We'll still need a motion, sir.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meetings on September 24th.
Hang on, ma'am. We'd like to move item 9A.
Right.
To right after you finish your minutes. So I'm gonna need a motion to move that item.
Okay. I'd move to move 9A to right after the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Passes unanimously. That way we won't have to keep all your nice people for another hour and a half for so... Okay, well, we're there, so.
So then move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meetings on September 24th and October 8th, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Passes unanimously.
We're on 9A now, sir and council. The planning and zoning commission considered this request at their November 6, 2019, meeting and recommended approval as recommended with one condition. The private club use may occupy up to 5,000 square feet within the mall, and the vote was six-zero. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a private club within the existing Titusville Mall located at 3550 South Washington Avenue. The property is owned Regional Commercial RC with future land use designation of commercial high intensity. The Titusville Elks Club is proposing to occupy approximately 3,400 square feet of the mall. No expansion of existing buildings are proposed. The use will utilize the existing parking and ingress egress points for vehicular access to the property. Staff recommends one condition of the approval, which is stated above on the final report, which is the club may be used to occupy up to 5,000 square feet within the mall. And we have Ms. Bisaka available to, I think, have a short presentation or just questions, yep?
We don't have to show the presentation.
I don't, I don't think we have to. I have one statement, though. Because I am an Elk and it might be looked on as a conflict of interest, it isn't necessarily so, but in abundance of caution, I will refrain from voting on this item. So, okay. Let me get to the item. Actually, actually, you go ahead, city manager. You want to go ahead and introduce that item?
I just did, sir.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. I'm messing up tonight all over the place. Okay. Anybody have any discussion on this?
We have one card.
Call card, please.
It's Bob Swink.
Good evening. I'm Bob Swink.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor Johnson and esteemed members of this council. I just want to say that we have downsized or downsizing our lodge and going to temporarily be in the Titusville Mall for a couple of years until we find a place to plop, so to speak, and get back into the business of being a lodge. So I just want to know if you have any questions for us.
Any questions? I see no light, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, what's your pleasure on this?
I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the mall, and I, I hope, I hope they find a new home, but in the meantime, I think it's a great opportunity for Titusville to have it in the mall, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay. I have another light. Member Jordan?
All right. Actually, I was a little surprised when I went by the Elks Lodge and saw there was empty. I was wondering what happened to the thing. So I, I think this is a good place for me, certainly helping the, what do we call them all now? It's not Titusville Mall, for sure, and to take up 5,000 square feet. Piggy, there's no requirement for them to get a license or anything to be in the mall, right?
License, right.
If, I don't know about a BTR.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
But if there is, honestly, I don't know. Maybe, Richard, do you know?
We'll look at it.
And if, I just want to make sure that if there's a motion, that we know whether it includes the condition with up to 5,000 square feet to give them some flexibility.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
A BTR is a business tax receipt, and most, most businesses have to have one. This is not particularly a business as such, so they'll check on it and see. Okay. Vice Mayor?
Clearly, I've spent a lot of time down at your place with a lot of different groups. You guys have always been so hospitable and such an active community member, and I'm just excited that whatever shape you take and wherever you end up, you will continue to be the active group that you are. And I just sense that we're, we're here to support you and the way you've supported our community. So again, I didn't realize that you were thinking this is temporary and you're gonna look for another place to plop. I look forward to parties wherever you may be.
Well said. Member Jordan? He's through. You're next.
Oh, thank you very much. I move that we approve CUP number 6-2019 to allow private club with existing units at the Titusville Mall. The club will use and occupy up to 5,000 square feet within the mall.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Quick and easy, right?
Yeah.
All right. Back to the agenda. Item 5?
Yes, sir. We're now on item 6A, which is the Student Advisory Council. Per the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-53, removal of members, a co-chairman of the Student Advisory Council has submitted a memo notifying the city council on a matter of the 12th grade representative of the North of Art Home School Association, Mr. Simon Riker, having automatically forfeited his seat due to being absent during three consecutive regular monthly meetings on August 20th, September 17th, and October 15th, 2019. The code also provides that upon approval of the city council, the council may authorize the board member to miss more than three consecutive meetings and more than 50% of the regular or special workshop meetings during a six-month period. Due to the provisions of the city codes, Mr. Riker, a 12th grade student from the North of Art Home School Associations, indicates that he, his desire to continue to serve and for the city council to authorize his absence during the board's regular meetings on August 20th, September 17th, and August, or correction, October 15th, thereby allowing him to continue to serve on the Student Advisory Council. And I believe his record is here.
Is, is the gentleman here, sir? Would you like to come up? I think I'm speaking for the council. So we'd like to hear why you couldn't make those meetings and what, what the situation is, so we can determine with some knowledge as to whether to remove you or not.
So I'm part of the Titusville swim team, and the meetings were conflict with meets this season. And just to be my last season, you know, I was trying to give it all, give it my all and finish off strong, so.
Is there a procedure that you can ask for an approved absence when you have a conflict?
There may be.
I'm guessing there is.
There, there might be.
Maybe something, if you do get reappointed, is something you should check in with, with your board there. If there is, then you, we don't have to go through this again.
Right, right.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Obviously, I totally understand the commitment to a swim team, to any kind of team, and, and I get that totally. But are you communicating with these people? Do they know where you're at when you're not there?
Yes, I believe so. But, well, I have communicated, and I believe they all know.
Okay. You know, obviously, from my educational background, I was, so there's no such thing as an excuse afterwards. The excuse comes beforehand. So if you let them know beforehand, I feel good about that.
Right.
But if they had no idea, and we're sitting here right now, that's a concern. I think you've been up here and presented at one point, and I thought, I was very impressed with how you presented. And certainly, I don't want to do anything to get you off track, and I totally understand your other commitment. If nothing else is the mayor just said, make sure we communicate, because I'm not sure it got communicated the way it should have.
Yes, sir.
Member Jordan?
I just wanted to comment. There isn't a process for boards to excuse their own absences. You make the appointments, so the rules are if they miss meetings, they come to you at that point for you to excuse them. So he may well have communicated, and they may have been fine with it, but it still would require him to come to you. So the fact he's here does not mean that they didn't know or that they didn't...
I get that, I guess, but I don't think it's very wise for us to come in here and not know if he communicated. I don't know if they can put that in the minutes or how that works out, but it would be good for me, when I sit in my city manager meeting, for someone to say, yes, he communicated that, and then I got nothing to say.
Yes, and I guess the city doesn't, but I've been on boards where you could call and say that, for a good reason, I can't make the meeting, and then you get excused. It may not be on, on, it, that may not be, according to the, the city attorney, it isn't. But as Vice Mayor just said, if you could, if you had somebody coming through and, well, he called us, and let us know. You get it.
Right, same.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. It's okay. You're looking at all these old people here, except Sarah.
Hey.
And they're saying, it's okay. I, I, I hear what Vice Mayor Diesel is saying, and, you know, that was my first question, too, is did you just talk to him to find out, to let him know that you're gonna be absent? I mean, it's definitely a, a good excuse, that you aren't just playing around, you were actually doing something productive, for sure. So I certainly agree with that. So, but I also understand what the attorney is saying. They have no power to excuse you. The procedure is they have to come here.
Yes, but I agree. Certainly, they can advise their boards, and when they are notified to come to you for excuse, at that time, they could let us know, and the board could let us know whether or not he had given them that information, whether they had excused it, and then they could certainly provide that information to us to, so we know that at this meeting.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, as soon as everybody's finished talking, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. We still have a couple of lights here. Member Nelson, you're up again.
Simon. So moving forward, are you going to be in the same situation of missing meetings or swim meet's done?
Yes, the season just finished, so I'm completely done with that.
So from here out, you'll be at meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
She just asked my question.
Okay. Your light just disappeared. Okay. Any, any further discussion on this? If not, Member Jordan, I think you said you wanted to make the motion?
Yes, I move that we authorize the absences during the, what was it, September 17th, October 15th? Is that the only two, and August 20th meetings for this young man?
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And you oppose, like sign. You got another shout-out, son.
Thank you.
Too, too good.
Tell Coach Tasha we let it go.
Next item, please.
Our next agenda item is item 6B, Historic Preservation Board. There are currently two vacancies for an alternate member with one term to expire on October 31st, 2020, and one term to expire on October 31st, 2021. There's currently one application on file for consideration. Ms. Toni Shalufo has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this commission as an alternate member. Staff is recommending that Mrs. Shalufo be appointed to an expired term, which will expire on October 31st, 2021. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Okay. Let me just go back. I'm sorry. Was there something else there? That's that one. Okay. What's your, what's your pleasure on this, counsel?
I was sort of hoping that Ms. Shalufo would be here. I don't know if she...
I am here.
You are here.
Okay.
Yay.
There you go.
Can you come up and tell us a little bit about yourself? By the way, I found, drove by your house the other day. It's beautiful, isn't it?
Somehow, it's, she has an...
You say, where's she going with that?
No, I was stalking her.
Drive-by-er.
I was not a drive-by.
No, it's, it's, um, don't listen to them. It's one of the 11 locally designated historic structures in Titusville.
Yeah. It's, it's entropic, and it's just a historic structure. And you had indicated, shown us a picture of your house, and I said, oh, that's a house. So it's a cute house.
Yes, and my husband has done wonders with the garden, the yard.
Yeah.
So I am a former archivist at CNN. I did video news for 20 years. And as an archivist, I dig rather deeply into things to build an archive. And when I, unbeknownst to me, bought a historic structure in Titusville, I was just looking for a great place to live. I started having to research to answer questions about the house and things. So I've gone fairly deeply into the settlement of Titusville and things. So when I went to the community meeting that the Historic Preservation Board had in October over at the Community Service Center on De Leon, they said there was a vacancy on the board, and I had been to one or two of the meetings already, and I thought, well, this would be a great opportunity, not only to deepen my involvement in the history of this area, but to be of service to the community and also to get to know people and, and get established in the area. I, this is, November is my second anniversary of owning the Norwood House and living in Titusville. I am a Floridian, though, by, by, I was raised in Orlando, so. And I lived in Atlanta for most of my adult life and then came home again to be near my, my parents and family in Orlando. My mom is 95 and still lives in the same house she moved into when I was in first grade, so.
Wow.
So we have longevity.
Yes.
And depth.
So we can have you on the board for the next 30 years?
Probably.
Okay.
I've got good genes, you know?
Any other questions? Okay. What's your pleasure?
Can I make a motion to appoint Toni Shifalo?
Shifalo.
Shifalo to the Historic Preservation Board as an alternate?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Welcome aboard, ma'am.
Thank you.
Before you go, let me say also, I think it's great that you came in. That, that doesn't always happen, and it's, this is a really great example of, we get to meet the person, they tell us their backgrounds and so forth, and, and thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, I, I have quite an interesting background, not to take up any more of everybody's time, but I, I wrote it in my application.
Sure.
About historic preservation in my home in Decatur, Georgia, outside of Atlanta, saved in 1920, 1924 Queen Anne and two of its sister houses, and a whole neighborhood of 1930s craftsman style got them, they were slated for demolition, and I saved them. So I like to be effective. So thank you very much for putting...
Thank you very much for coming in.
You'll see lots of me.
And I want to, I want to, not, that's fine, ma'am. I want to consent, continue on that thought, though, because I, I think we need some sort of procedure, or at least a request that they, people do come up and we get to see them and talk to them, or as an alternate that we can individually meet with them if we like to do it. Now, everybody's not gonna be able to, you know, maybe the same person may be interviewed by a few of us, and then we can convey that at, when we're in a public meeting and that sort of thing. So I'd like some opinions on that. I'm seeing heads shaking up and down. That's good.
My head shaking up and down. I really like the idea of meeting the individuals beforehand, and I do try to talk to them before, before the meetings, but really prefer to, to meet with them. And that sort of, sort of goes into the next issue. I did talk to Romy Grant. He has hurt his back, so he's not here tonight. I had talked to Robin Taylor beforehand on other occasions, but I didn't have an opportunity to really sit down and talk to either of them. So we're trying to make some decisions on what to do for planning and zoning, and I think it's important that we sit down and talk to these people.
I, I do also. Can, can we formulate some sort of process where the, or call them?
We, the clerk does call and invite the applicant to come, and by your ordinance, the application has to be in seven days prior to, to your meeting, so.
And I think, in my opinion, we ought to stick to that more closely than we have on some occasions in the past. I don't think it's fair that people get their, their application in and then somebody else comes along late. You know, they should really have been there. So that's my opinion, but go ahead, sir. I'm sorry for interrupting.
And if you'd like to modify that, we, we can do that, but I, I think the, what Member Nelson is suggesting is that council contact the member, the applicant, and perhaps talk to them on the phone or meet with them prior to the meeting.
Yeah, well, I would, I'm saying, making a procedure for the clerk, that they call them, ask them if they would come in, and if they don't, you know, ask them, would they be available for meeting with individual council people or taking phone calls from individual, so that we, they know what's coming on, happening?
Sure.
Okay. Everybody all right with that? We don't need a motion or nothing? Okay. I still have lights up here. Is, is, yeah?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
I think this is a great problem that we have, because this is what I've been waiting for. I think when a lot of us got first elected, we just had one applicant, and we were just kind of, and now we're having multiple applicants, and I think that now we're seeing, we don't really have a rubric to go by. We're kind of coming in with, looking at their applications with what we know and trying to evaluate them. I would be interested in even going perhaps a step further and seeing if staff could perhaps bring back some information on what other cities might be doing, if they interview the candidates, if they have set questions, any tools that could help us as we get more applicants.
I don't see any harm in that.
Yep, we can certainly do that. It's really what you... It's really what you would like to do. I, I think each city kind of does their, a different approach. Like I shared with you, I, I was interviewed.
Right.
For a P&amp;Z position, and we can certainly set up interviews and add more rigor into the process if, if the council so desires.
And perhaps see some training or where they have to come in, and depending on what board it is, I would be interested in seeing something like that, I think.
Vice Mayor?
Instead of just nodding up and down with my head like I was, I thought I'd say, I, I think that since we, this last four-year thing, I think that we have now got more people coming in than we ever had coming in before, because there for the first couple of years that we were on the council, I don't think I ever met anybody. I mean, we just, you know, there's the names, there's, they all both look good. That's when it first came up, when we had two that looked so good, we said, let's hold it and bring them in. So I think that we are evolving into more people coming in. I don't want to get so far, you know, I think we've got to be careful sometimes about training, and, you know, some people are going to say, okay, I'm not so sure I need to do all this, I've already got this going on. I think that some sort of informational gathering of something, keep it informal, but I do like the people coming in. I, like for you, for example, the application looked great and all that went with it, but I couldn't get your passion until you spoke. You know, there's a passion for what you do, and you're just, you're really dying to tell us more, and I think that that's exciting.
Okay, I see no other lights, so I guess you have your...
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Instructions. Next item, please.
Item 6C is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Regular member John Chambers has submitted his resignation effective October 16, 2019 due to personal reasons. His term expires on January 31st, 2021. Ms. Robin Taylor currently serves as an alternate member with a term to expire on January 31st, 2020. She has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this board as a regular member with an unexpired term to expire on January 31st, 2021. And if not appointed as a regular member, she wishes to continue to serve as an alternate member. Ms. Taylor is currently on leave of absence from the Planning and Zoning Commission until November 12th, 2019. Suzanne Noel Copeland currently serves as an alternate member but does not wish to be considered for a regular member. Romy Grant currently serves on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board as a regular member with a term to expire on October 31st, 2021. He has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member with an unexpired term to expire on January 31st, 2021. Mr. Grant does not wish to be considered as an alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commissions. If Mr. Grant is not appointed as a regular member to the P&amp;Z, he wishes to continue to serve as a member of the Municipal Code Enforcement Board. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Okay. Member Nelson?
This is one that I was speaking about. I did call Romy Grant. He could not be here tonight. He hurt his back, so apparently it will be several days before we, we can meet with him. I would like to get a chance to meet with him, so for that reason, I would ask that we consider tabling it to the next meeting.
Are you making a motion to that?
I will make a motion to that effect.
I second that.
Ma'am, if I could have you as part of that, accept Mr. Chambers' resignation as part of your motion?
Yes, and accept Mr. Chambers' resignation.
Second holds.
Okay.
With our gratitude.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Municipal Code Enforcement Board. The term of regular member Larry Edwards, Masonary Contractor, expired on October 31st, 2019. Based on the appointments to the board being tabled, Mr. Edwards will continue to serve until an appointment is made at this meeting. Mr. Edwards has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for another three years with a term to expire on October 31st, 2022. If council appoints, if council appointed the Municipal Code Board member, Mr. Romy Grant, as a regular member to the Planning and Zoning Commission on previous agenda item, then additional appointment will be needed on this item, which we did not do. There's one other member, or one other applicant for your consideration. Mr. Tuan Lee has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board as a regular member, engineer or open classification, for a three-year term to expire on October 31st, 2022, or as an alternate member, engineer or open classification, for an unexpired term to expire on October 31st, 2020. In addition, William Kilpatrick currently serves on a Board of Adjustment and Appeals as an alternate member, Public at Large, with a term to expire on July 31st, 2021. He has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board as a regular member, open classification, for a three-year term to expire on October 31st, 2022, or as an alternate member, open classification, with an unexpired term to expire on October 31st, 2020. If Mr. Kilpatrick is not appointed to the Municipal Code Board, he wishes to continue to serve on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Okay. It's a lot. I know we, we have Mr., well, I have a light on, so I'll take that first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This light on, okay. Since Mr. Lee is here, I would like to have him come up and, and speak to us and, and tell us a little bit about, about your experiences, and I have known Mr., I want to preface it with, I've, I've known Mr. Lee for several years now, and I know he's been in business in our area, and he has, he has some other plans for the future in this area. A very unique individual because the businesses he has are, one is an engineering firm and the other is two restaurants, so he keeps himself very busy. But with that, I'll at least let you speak for yourself, sir.
Well, thank you very much, I'm Michael Watson, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight, and...
Please speak, pull the microphone down to you a little bit.
It's my pleasure to be here tonight, and thank you very much for the introduction. Yes, I'm graduating from UCF 15 years ago. I'm old. And... And I, I, my first job is water and wastewater for Amazon Electric, and after a few years of work for water and wastewater, I learned a lot about code enforcement, environmental, energy, agriculture, and all different sorts of natural resource. So I, after a few years of work for Amazon Electric, I get recruited by the team here at KSC to be an engineer out there at Kennedy Space Center, and I worked here for a little bit over 10 years as Kennedy Space Center, and somehow I'm falling in love with the title of view. But to be honest, when I first moved out here, I want to go back to Orlando. But after one year of staying here, I don't want to go back. So I think this is where I call home, and I would like to invest my energy and my experience and my knowledge and skill to the city to help the city improve whatever resource that the city did for me, from code enforcement or environmental or, or any agriculture, engineering work, structure, because I'm on an engineering company, and we win a contract at Kennedy Space Center on facility that includes water and wastewater out there and all the facility out there. And I also stand another branch of engineering as a renovation. We provide drone technology for the city and state and government and commercial use. So I think with all experience and my knowledge and skill, I would be, I benefit for the city.
I will just add to that, what I said before. I, I hold, I've known him several years, and I, I hold him in high regard, so I hope we give him a consideration on, on this. Ma'am?
You do know I want him for the Titusville Environmental Commission.
Huh?
You know I want him for the Titusville Environmental Commission.
He's an engineer, and I think he'd do us a lot better.
Oh, I think so.
Okay.
I think you could, I think, no matter where we put him, he would do a great job.
But as he has the training in this, I think that gives us an advantage having him on, on this board to be there. So we're fighting over you.
Well, thank you very much, and I, thank you, Jolene, and I, I think I have a diverse skill. As you know, I don't want to talk much about myself, but whatever role you want to put me in, I think I will be the best resource out of it.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry.
You have questions, sir?
Well, I have a question, only if Mr. Kilpatrick is also present.
Certainly.
And, okay.
You might as well stay for just a second in case anybody else has a question.
That was my question.
Okay. Anybody else have a question? I, now, if you will, sit down and we'll, we'll go further here. What's your pleasure, then?
I'd make a motion to point Tuan Lee to the Municipal Code Enforcement Board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Just to confirm, the motion was for as the regular member?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, as the regular member. Thank you, sir, and thank you for coming in this evening. Next item, please.
Yes, sir, we're on Item 6E, the North Provence Library District Board, except their semi-annual report is written.
We'll vote approval, sir.
You have a motion and a second? I missed what the motion was, I'm sorry, it was...
Oh, I'm sorry, it's to accept the North Provence Library District's Board's semi-annual report.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. I do have a light up, Member Broom. Yeah, Member Broom, City Attorney.
Yeah, Broom.
I'm sorry, that was for the last item. You appointed Mr. Tuan Lee as a regular member.
Right.
I believe, I want to clarify, Mr. Kilpatrick had offered to be either a regular or an alternate, and you do have spots for two alternates. I didn't know if you wanted to take action with Mr. Kilpatrick within that regard or not.
Do that.
I think I'm in the same position as I am with the planning and zoning people, Robin Taylor and Romy Grant. I have never talked to Mr. Kilpatrick. He is not present tonight. So I think, for me, I...
So to clarify, you're not taking action on that, but did you want to bring that back for consideration at your next meeting and invite him? I just want to clarify what you wanted to do with the city manager.
We would like to table that particular action until the next meeting.
Table it, or can we just consensus?
Yeah, consensus, I'd like a vote, so we understand, put it on the agenda.
So I would move to table that action until the next meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Now. Which one? We're on the...
Yes, sir, you're on petitions of request.
Petitions and requests, okay, all right.
Did you vote?
Do we have anybody that we should...
Yeah, you got to finish your vote first.
Accept the library report.
Yeah.
We made a motion. I don't think we finished it.
Let's start, let's start all over, make a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the North Provence Library District's Board's semi-annual report. That's written.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Okay, petitions and requests, would anybody like to speak? Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
Name and address to the record, please.
Michael Majak, Alpine Lane, Titusville, Florida.
Thank you, sir.
One of the things that I, I noticed when we were traveling through, through the country from Maine and back again, we took all these back roads, and so we came through lots of small towns, and it was very evident that most of the small towns had as a focal point was the railway that came through the town. And they would either have a station right on the tracks or a roadway and, and their tracks run in parallel. And we saw this time after time. But one of the things that I thought was the most interesting that showed up in the antebellum south were these huge live oak trees that were always spanning the roadways. You know, up north, they used to have elms, and for a time now they have ash, but that seems to be going by the way with ash yellows and some other diseases. And, and global warming's not helping our trees either. They're, they're reaching into the point where occasionally, once or twice throughout the course of a year now, they hit a mortality rate where the leaves start to dry. But our, our moniker, when we come into Titusville, is nature and space, and we really have the key to that nature here with the kind of flora and fauna that we have in our area. And we have these bike trails that are running through our city or partially planned and will be finished out. And one of the things that our bike trails need are trees. Now, one of the reasons that we have problems in putting trees along our bike trails is that we don't own the land, but yet the trail from Parish Road South is still within our purview, our responsibility. So I would like to recommend to you guys to think about the idea of developing a public-private partnership where you and with the county, or you and FDOT or the state can work together to plant trees in areas that are benefiting our city, that add to our canopy, that create that antebellum look down that bike trail as people come in from the other side of the state. Let's show them what we can really have in our city. That's, so that's my question for you guys tonight. Can we work on a public-private partnership where we can plant more trees? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Wait one second, you may have, have some questions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Member Nelson?
I don't know if it's necessarily a question, but, well, it's not a question for Mike, but it's a question for our city manager. Is there a possibility to work on a public-private partnership to maybe establish some trees down that bike trail?
Yes, ma'am, we've asked several times, FDOT, as well as the, the areas that still belong to the railroad company.
Yeah.
And right now, they're interested in finishing the project first.
Okay.
Which is probably two to three, maybe four years out, and then they want to go back and do some amenities for that.
Okay, let me ask this question, just, just as a thought. We have Keeper of Our Beautiful, we have the Men's Garden Club, the Garden Clubs. Could we create a partnership with them to maybe get some trees going down that area?
Yes, ma'am, we've, we've suggested to both FDOT and the railroad that we have available trees that we would plant, and we were told that we were going to wait until the project is complete.
So basically, Stonewall?
I, I don't know that, ma'am, but we, we have asked several times, because as, as you know, I'm a bicyclist, and I would like to see shade.
I'm sure you would.
As well as other people.
Especially in July.
And we have not gotten much traction. We are going to try to get the TPO to help us with that.
Okay, that might be a way to get...
Yeah, but as for just the city of Titusville, we've been kind of shut out on that.
TPO?
Or four years. That's four years ago. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else who should speak?
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, Titusville. As you, as you're aware, I have this, this sign in the back of the room. It has to do with some, some issues that started February 12th, but it also goes back even further than that. So this is the sign that, that I have, I have back there. And it involves a, a report, a LOMAR report, letter of map revision for Baker subdivision, but I've, I've send you, sent you some, two emails, October the 27th and on October the 31st. Number eight on October 31st, number eight item, it says that, that I'm disappointed with your misinformation, denial of the truth, and more cover-ups. And this has to do with, it's been 33 years of a deliberate failure by our city government and our present mayor and the city council to notify FEMA of city-approved calculations that dispute the flood elevation. Goes back to 1985. 1985 freshwater management. In other words, the city approved these calculations and said, hey, the elevation is such and such, and now the elevation is, 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 is higher. And the calculations, we don't have any calculations. Uh, and the calculations, we don't have any calculations, as far as I know, anywhere in the city, to prove that these calculations are correct. Nothing from FEMA, nothing from the city. But we have calculations that say that they're wrong. So, this is very similar to what happened to Baker's subdivision. So, for over 30 years, Baker's subdivision was, was put in a situation where, where they had the wrong flood zone elevation, and, uh, finally, houses were taken out 30 years later. No explanation, no apology, no, nothing whatsoever from the city. So, we're having the same thing, it appears as having the same thing happening in some other subdivisions now. Parkland State subdivision in Titusville, Bay Meadows subdivision in the county, and numerous lots along, uh, War Eagle Boulevard. We're talking about 80 lots. And, and right now is that FEMA requested, uh, city to provide information to FEMA if you have any information to dispute the flood zone. City didn't do it. Didn't do it. Had the information, didn't do it. So, um, right now, our council will not submit this information to FEMA. We even have a dam there, a dam that, uh, that floods private property, no question about it. It's over 50 acres, it flooded by, flooding of private property by the design of the dam. So, that's, that's a disappointment to me. And I also have this, uh, uh, report that says that, uh, the city said should spend $70,000 to investigate my correspondence, which the report that I've been, I've received has nothing to do with it. So, I'm disappointed with what the city is, is doing, and the, uh, I want to use the word fraud. May I have more time? Anything, sir? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Come up, sir. Name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Bill Klein. I live at Three Indian River Avenue, apartment 906, Titusville. I just wanted to bring something to the attention of Titusville, where you all may want to work a little more with the county parks and recreation. County Parks and Recreation is getting ready to do a massive new project at Parish Park. It looks like a great project. It's going to add a lot of parking, uh, parking spaces, roadway.
Would you back off just slightly from the microphone?
Oh, sure.
You're popping.
Thank you. And one of the things they're not doing there is shoreline protection for, for this new park. And another thing, I don't think they have a lot of background from Titusville's resiliency plan, because where the parking lot's going to be in the roadways, looks like it's going to be subject to flooding from our Titusville resilience plant, and also sea level rise. Eventually, it's going to flood it out. I brought this information up to the Parks and Recreation, and they said that they're only working, you know, within the water boundaries, so that they are not responsible for shoreline protection, and they don't see the need for raising the parking lot. And I'm just thinking that this could be a wonderful project for Titusville, but I think maybe we need to get Titusville people to work with the Parks people and let them know about our resilience plan and the dangers that their new facilities might be subjected to in the future. And if anyone would like me to help work on this, I'd be glad to bring any information I have, but I just thought it would be good for you all to know about it.
Mr. City Manager, who, who owns that land?
The county does.
It's county-owned land, sir. Uh, I was at the meeting, I think you were at the same meeting, where, uh, I guess it was DOT, uh, and there were a lot of suggestions made at that point, and they, as DOT does, they take it and keep record of it and so forth, and they said they would look at all of those things, but certainly, most of the conversation was on the shoreline, if you recall. So, I, I think, uh, we have tried to work with them. The county is working with them, it's their responsibility, so there's limited things that we can do with FDOT. I don't know if you've ever worked with them or not, but they, they're not very responsive. Uh, and we, we did what we could do, sir.
Right. I'm afraid we might just see a lot of money wasted, because I have also worked with the DOT on trying to get a crosswalk by Sandpoint Park since 2012, and even though there's been a traffic accident there where a man was killed, they don't see the need for protection for the crosswalk into Sandpoint Park. So, I understand what the DOT does.
You have no argument for me, sir. But, uh, it's, it's the, the way things are. DOT has their way of doing things, and there's, there's nothing we, we can do locally about that, especially when it's not in our purview, so. But I thank you for suggesting it, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak? I don't see anybody coming up. Next item, sir?
Yes, sir, we are to consent, and, uh, mayor and council, would any council members or the mayor wish to pull any of the consent agenda items?
I have none.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have one. It'll be nine G.
Nine, nine, nine G, that's H G.
I had to look myself. H G, eight G.
Okay. Any other items?
Um, City Clerk, is there any cards on any of the consent agenda items? So, Mayor, I'd like to read for the record and...
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chief Hutchinson, for the really long one that I have to read about vehicles. Consent agenda item eight A, approve the successor collective bargaining agreement between the Laborers International Union of North America Local 630 and the City of Titusville. Consent agenda item eight B, accept Arbor Day 2020 educational materials valued at $100. Consent agenda item eight C, adopt resolution 51-2019 supporting the temporary road closures of State Road for the AMAX Brewer 5K Run and Rotary Chili Cookoff to be held on February 22nd, 2020. Consent agenda item eight D, authorize the purchase of two 2020 Chevrolet Equinox vehicles, one 2020 Ford Transport, um, F-150 cargo van, one 2020 F-150 pickup truck, included the associated emergency lighting and siren equipment from Allen J Fleet Services for a total not to exceed $119,912 for the fire department. Purchase of police vehicles for 2020, approve the use of Sourcewell Contract for the purchase of six 2020 Chevy Tahoe police vehicles from Allen J Fleet Services at $55,861.33 each for a total of $335,167.98. Four 2020 Chevy Tahoe police sergeant vehicles from Allen J Fleet Services at $53,121.33, each totaling at $212,485.32. Three 2020 Chevy Traverse unmarked vehicles from Allen J Fleet Services at $46,740 for a total amount of $140,220. Two 2020 Chevy Tahoe Police K-9 vehicles from Allen J Fleet Services at $59,316.33, each for a total of $118,632.66. Two 2020 Chevy Traverse civilian vehicles from Allen J Fleet Services for $37,443, each for a total of $74,886. One 2019 Chevy Colorado Crew Club Community Watch vehicle from Allen J Fleet Services for $29,195.33, for a total of $29,195.33. Purchase Ford DRX 2X Stalker radar systems from sole-source vendor Allied Concepts Incorporated in the amount of $3,098, each for a total of $12,462. And purchase 18 radio chargers, 18 power adapter kits from the vendor of Record Communications International in the amount of $2,447.60. The total amount for this project for police vehicles and equipment for FY20 is $925,496.90. Consent agenda item eight F, approve the award of Bovard Public Entity Purchasing Cooperative Bid to Matheson Trigas Incorporated, Vering, Texas in the amount of $19,200 for the acquisition of chemicals from Miami, Florida in the amount of $140,836 for the acquisition of chemicals, um, of Chemicals Incorporated of Tampa, Florida in the amount of $8,557 for the acquisition of hydrofluoric acid. In addition, authorize the inclusion of the award firms, the approved vendor of record list for chemicals, and authorize the city manager to issue a purchase order and acquire said chemicals on a need, as need basis, and in accordance with the authorization permitted by the vendor of record. Consent agenda item eight G, approve the interlocal agreement regarding the occupational employee health services between the City of Titusville and Parish Medical Center. Consent agenda item eight H, approve subject to resolution and contract terms by the city attorney and city manager, the award of the contract to top-ranked firm Kimberly Horn Associates to provide continuing engineering consulting services for Code 115 Landscape Architect for a three-year initial term and two option years and a one-year extension, of one-year extension, and authorize the mayor to execute the contracts. Consent agenda item eight I, approve the purchase of mobile radios not to exceed $93,568 from Communications International. Consent agenda item eight J, approve subject to resolution of contract terms by the city attorney and city manager, the award of contract to top two-ranked firms, DRMP of Melbourne, Florida, the number-one-ranked, uh, firm as the primary consultant, and Kimberly Horn Associates Incorporated of Orlando, Florida, as the number-two-ranked firm, the secondary consultant, to provide continuing engineering consulting services for Code 108 Traffic Engineering for a three-year initial term, two optional one-year extensions, and authorize the mayor to execute the contracts. Consent agenda item eight K, approve the attached budget amendment providing the necessary funding and purchase of one, uh, 150 KW portable generator from Trade Winds Power Incorporated of Miami, Florida in the amount of $83,357 per the Florida Sheriff Association contract, and authorize the city manager to issue the purchase order for the necessary acquisition. Consent agenda item eight L, approve advisability for staff to engage one of the city's continuing engineering services consultants to draft reclaimed water master plan for both the north and south areas of critical concern. Consent agenda item eight M, approve the purchase of PACSET portable radios not to exceed $44,100, and authorize the city manager to execute the, the order necessary to purchase. Consent agenda item eight N, approve advisability for staff to review and make recommendations regarding building trade services in planned industrial PID districts. And consent agenda item eight O, approve change order number one in the amount of $32,303.53 to contract CN19B057 with Affordable Development Incorporated of Titusville, Florida, to furnish all materials, labor, and equipment to install two insertion valves and the associated components on State Route 405 Utility Relocation Project, and authorize the city manager to execute the change order.
That was one of the longest consented changes. Do you need a break or anything?
No, sir, we're ready to, we're really happy to get ahead on the vehicles, so, Chief, both Chief Woodward here and Chief Hutchinson, and, uh, this is probably the earliest we've got the vehicles done, so we're really happy about that.
And just a comment for the, for the public. Each of us on council prior to the meeting tonight has a, a, a meeting set up with the city manager and the city attorney to individually, because we can't do it together, uh, go over these items, and we, we, uh, go through each one, make sure that everything is, uh, is okay and we understand it, and certainly, when one of us has a question, they can pull the one off, which has happened, so. If you want to speak to that one?
Oh, I can do that. Okay, thanks. The reason why I pulled this, this is eight G, North Bovard County Hospital Interlocal Agreement Regarding Occupation and Employee Health Services. Based on what the statute says, which is Florida Statute 286 dot 012, council members must vote on agenda items unless there is or appears to be a possible conflict of interest. If there is or appears to be a possible conflict of interest, the members shall comply with disclosure requirement and also file Form 8B. Uh, there really isn't a conflict, I'm not getting anything from this interlocal agreement, but because the words up, it could appear, someone could think that there is a conflict, then I must abstain from this vote, and that's why I'm doing that. And I will be filing Form 8B to make sure.
Just as I did previously.
Exactly, yes, for sure.
Uh, so, we can take everything but that one separate, I mean, we can do the rest of them and leave that one separate, and we'll vote on that.
Yes, sir, and you do have a resolution or two in there too, so you'll need a roll call on the first batch.
Okay, you want to take it from there?
Yes, sir.
City Manager?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was about to make the motion.
Uh, you, uh, okay, well, do yours first. Okay, that's great. I was going to do the others first, but that's fine.
Oh, no, I was going to do...
No, go, go.
Oh, okay. Well, I move that we approve.
Your motion, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I have, okay, I have yours, yours, I have, uh, Member Nelson as well. Did you want to say? No, she just took hers off. Now, you can make your motion.
Okay, I'm a little afraid to do, I wanted to do the, the eight A through F.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, actually, all of now, eight A through F and eight H through O. That's my motion.
Okay, you can, you can, yes.
You can do that, right? Okay.
Yes, you're right.
So, I move that.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Roll call vote, I'm sorry. Go ahead, roll call.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Now, the separate one.
So, I would move to approve the North Bovard County Hospital Interlocal Agreement Regarding Occupational Employee Health Services.
Second.
I have a motion in, in a second. Any further discussion? I hear none. Uh, we don't need a roll call on that. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry.
Pass, you, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Passes unanimously. Okay, very good. Next item, please.
We are to 10A, and City Attorney will read the ordinance.
Yes, sir, this is ordinance's first reading, which is ordinance number 39-2019, relating to expiration of conditional use permits after issuance of a building permit. Ordinance 39-2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to modify expiration dates for conditional use permits by amending Section 3477 revocation of conditional use permits, providing for separability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is your first reading of ordinance 39-2019. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this ordinance during their November 6, 2019 meeting, and recommended tabling it to their next meeting. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on November 26, 2019 at 6:30, and Ms. Busaka has a few comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the motion correctly should read that the planning and zoning recommended to allow staff to, to table this, to allow staff to integrate the topic of pervious pavement with a more comprehensive ordinance.
That's the next item.
Never mind. That's my Emily Lettela moment for the night.
That's the next one.
Okay, well, now I'm lost again.
Mayor, that's the first reading, there's no action required by council.
Right, okay. We didn't go through all the procedures, ask council if there are any cards or anything?
No cards.
No, sir.
Okay, no cards. All right, next item?
Next item was item B, which is ordinance number 40-2019 relating to pervious pavement. Ordinance 40-2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending Chapter 30 Development Options, Section 30-276 General Design Requirements to Permit the Use of Pervious Pavement Standards and Credits Citywide, Providing for Separability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordances, An Effective Date, and Incorporation Into the Code.
This is your first reading of ordinance 40-2019. The second public hearing and second reading, or the public hearing and second reading will be at your November 26... will be at your November twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen, meeting at six-thirty, and Ms. Busaka would like to correct what the planning and zoning recommendations were.
You had your hand up last time.
I did, I did. I was so excited. The motion correctly should read, motion to table, table to allow staff to integrate the topic of pervious pavement with a more comprehensive ordinance that includes low-impact development and the tree ordinance. I'd also like to comment that it was Roseanne Rosanna Dana, not Emily Lettela.
I have no idea what you meant by that, but I'll, I'll let that go. Remember, Jordan, your, your light is still on, it's, yes, go ahead.
I, I got a concern with this because, you know, we, we asked staff to bring back something as far as the trees is concerned, and now, um, it, it looks like what the planning and zoning wants to do is just bring back some very comprehensive ordinance that has a lot of stuff integrated in this thing, and I think it's just going to bog things down for sure. I'm not sure this is the right thing for us to do. The tree ordinance should be separate from anything else and having the pervious, um, roads and all that good stuff. It just doesn't seem, it doesn't feel right to me that we should be trying to integrate all this stuff into one thing. I, I really believe what's going to happen is you, you try to make this thing so comprehensive, you're not going to get any protection of the trees at all, and it's just going to get swallowed up with all this other stuff we are trying to do. Just my opinion.
Thank you. Uh, Member Stokel?
Yeah, that was kind of going to be my question for you, Peggy. What were your thoughts on that? I don't know if the tree ordinance would be an appropriate place, but also what you felt about adding low-impact development, or how does that actually?
Actually, the, the comprehensive plan calls for us to put low-impact development in by 2020. So, this was a easy baby step to, to talk about one topic, and should the council choose to do this, there are some positive impacts for trees because you can actually pave closer to a tree with pervious pavement because it allows the water to soak down into the tree in the root zone. And I'd be happy to provide that information to council should they want to go forward with the public hearing at the next meeting. But we were, we promised that we would do the tree ordinance, and we would do what we called quick wins. When I was younger, a couple of weeks ago, I thought this was a quick win, and so I think that, that's what we told them, told you that we would do. Now, there are some other low-impact development standards, and those will also be coming back. As a matter of fact, in January, you should be receiving a, um, presentation from the Regional Planning Council to talk about some low-impact development to give everyone kind of a sense of where we're going. So, if you'd like me to put this all in to one timeframe, I think that would work. I don't think the tree ordinance and low-impact development should necessarily be in the same ordinance because we'd like to keep an ordinance relatively focused, but we could do it at the same time if that would be easier. To me, it's easier to do one thing at a time.
That's what I was getting at, too. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, it sounds like this is a step in the right direction, and we're still continuing to move in that step, just trying to do it systematically. Perfect, thank you.
Uh, Member Nelson?
Well, I think this time Sarah got my, my questions. My question was going to be, wouldn't it be easier to go ahead and at least talk about the impervious versus pervious pavement and get that started as we, that, that seems to be a quicker win, and then go to the trees? So, that would be my thought.
And I agree with you, I agree with, actually, I agree with all of you, I guess. And any, any other comments on this? This is, uh...
Can I, can I say thank you to Peggy?
Of course you might.
We were going to, I was going to ask you tonight about doing a presentation, and you read my mind.
No, ma'am, I can't say I did. Ms. St. Ange brought this to our attention, and I reached out to Mr. Milch at the Regional Planning Council, and he was happy to do that.
Thank you.
So, you, you need to give credit, you're welcome, but you need to give credit where it's due.
We'll give, we'll give her credit.
Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, we have Kay St. Ange.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Kay St. Ange, and I live at twenty-three sixty Maryland Avenue in Titusville. Um, staff has indicated that proposed ordinance forty, twenty nineteen, regarding pervious pavement is a way to incorporate more low-impact development techniques within the city code. More LID techniques certainly do need to be incorporated within the city code, but what is really needed is a comprehensive citywide LID ordinance. And as Peggy Busaka did mention, Mr. Milch will be giving a LID presentation to city council on January twenty-first, 2020. It is hoped that this presentation will lead to a comprehensive LID ordinance. The United States Environmental Protection Agency, in an article entitled Incorporating Low-Impact Development Into Municipal, Into Municipal Stormwater Programs, I'm going to say it again, Incorporating Low-Impact Development Into Municipal Stormwater Programs Recommends Steps For Municipalities To Take To Promote And Implement LID. The EPA Suggests Cities Provide Guidance For Implementing The New LID Standards By Developing An, An LID Manual. The EPA Article Recommends Runoff From Rooftops Be Directed To Porous Pavement To Promote Infiltration And Reduce Runoff Volumes. So, what they're recommending is that the runoff from, from the rooftops from our houses be directed into pervious pavement of our driveways. But ordinance forty, twenty nineteen, does not give any sort of guidance in regards to developers to direct runoff from rooftops to pervious pavement to reduce stormwater runoff. That would be in an LID manual, would be where we could see that type of guidance for developers. Pervious pavement, if utilized as an LID strategy, is part of a set of tools that allows a treatment of stormwater near the surface, that is where the rain falls, thus reducing the need for ineffective stormwater ponds. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection has found that stormwater ponds are not as effective as prevent, at preventing nutrients from entering surface and groundwater as originally thought. The University of Florida IFAS indicates, we need a better approach to manage stormwater runoff than ineffective stormwater ponds. LID strategies offer this better approach. LID incorporates the strategies of retaining and planting trees on development sites. Trees are very effective in absorbing stormwater and returning it to the local aquifers. The St. John's River Water Management District recommends LID strategies and states it works closely with applicants applying LID concepts to projects.
Do you need more time, ma'am?
About thirty seconds.
How about I'll give you a minute so you can...
Okay, very good, thank you.
Oh, I have a motion?
Okay.
I have a second, and a second. All those in, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
You got a full minute.
The P and Z Commission has recommended tabling this ordinance and rolling in it, it into a future LID ordinance and tree ordinance. A comprehensive LID ordinance with a LID guidance manual, as well as a tree ordinance, is what is needed for the benefit of residents, wildlife, the aquifers, and the Indian River Lagoon. So, I think you can see that it's not just a matter of having an ordinance regarding pervious pavement, it's, it's about providing the guidance for developers to use pervious pavement in the way that LID strategies recommend. It's not just a matter of putting down more pervious pavement and allowing that citywide. They need the guidance to use it in such a way that is an LID strategy. Thank you, is, are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions? I see one from the vice mayor.
Yeah, real quick, first of all, thank you for meeting with me the other day. Um, I got to look at the PowerPoint, and I was like, wow, there's a lot of good ideas here. Very enlightening. That being said, so you are in favor of the comprehensive, putting them all together?
Yes, because it's not just a matter of having an ordinance that allows pervious pavement. The developers need guidance on how to utilize pervious pavement to reduce runoff. So, let's say it rains on top of your house, and the runoff comes down off of your roof. If it was, if a developer put a pervious pavement driveway so that the runoff from the roof landed on that pervious pavement driveway, then that would be an effective LID strategy. But just allowing pervious pavement throughout the city is not an LID strategy, per se.
Do, would you like to see the, the tree ordinance separate, or would you like that part of it?
Well, a tree ordinance is part of an LID strategy, it truly is.
Well, and I believe that. What I'm trying to get at is here, because when we spoke in our meeting previously, several meetings previously, I was kind of of the thing, we want to get something out there on trees and get started. I don't want to dilute anything on trees, but at the same time, maybe you're telling me it's better if we came out with it all together, because I'm, I'm really asking.
Because trees are an integral part of reducing stormwater runoff, and that's what LID is all about. I do believe it would be better to do it as a comprehensive approach and get, do it in the right, appropriate way so that there is a balance, so the developers know the best way to develop, so that we can go ahead and continue to develop and build houses, but build them in a way that is sustainable for our community.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other cards?
Can I, can I ask a question? Kay, let me, let me ask a question real quick, I'm sorry. Yeah, run back. So, what I'm hearing you say is, obviously, what we'd like to have is a comprehensive plan, but obviously, that's going to take time. Um, can't, I don't, don't think they can spin it out tomorrow, but in the meantime, would it be useful, at least from your perspective, to maybe have this pervious pavement ordinance if it spoke to where, how to implement it? Do you follow me?
Yes, I do follow you. I am concerned that we don't fully understand the impact on the Indian River Lagoon as far as utilizing pervious pavement. I also am concerned that the ordinance, as it reads, says that the city will go, come into a contract with the owner to inspect the pervious pavement annually, but from what I have been hearing, that isn't being done. I went to the CVS pharmacy the other day, and there were pools of water on the pervious pavement, so it doesn't appear to be percolating. So, I'm, I'm not sure that we're, we are getting the annual inspection, so I'm, I'm not sure that it's being done appropriately.
Okay, I think Ms. Busaka.
I, I, the, um, the CBS was, someone went in and paved over the pervious concrete because in the city, you need to get a permit to resurface the parking lot, and they didn't do that, and that has been turned over to code enforcement. So, that is not the way that the city believes it should be done, and we are moving forward to get that situation corrected.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you can see the dilemmas that we have. You've given them more extra parking, assuming it's going to be pervious, and they've broken the rules, and now we got to go back and fix it. There's no going back and fixing it, so we have to make sure we do all this very carefully and with forethought.
Okay, so maybe, maybe Ms. Busaka would consider, like, maybe working a little bit more on the ordinance?
We can certainly do that, but if, if Ms. St. Ange's recommendation of having the tree ordinance go with the LID means that that date of the tree ordinance in January will not happen. Now, we can, we will work together, you know, we will work to get this done. As I said, the comprehensive plan says that we'll finish, we'll have one in place by 2020. So, the land clearing issues, which seem to be a priority for council, would not be addressed until the LID ordinance was ready, and that will take some additional work. So, that is really the trade-off that I see.
I am not suggesting stopping any prohibition of clearing land. Obviously, that is critical to me, and if a developer can be prevented from clearing land at this point, please do so.
So, I think the answer is Ms. Busaka is going to work her fingers to the bone.
So, but if council doesn't want to go forward with this ordinance, it can certainly, we don't have to have this meeting on the twenty, you know, on the twenty-sixth. It's been advertised, but it could be shown on the agenda as being, you know, not going to be heard, and then we will work, but in, and it, we, we will be, come back to you in several months after we get this put together as, in a comprehensive way. That's whatever the council would like.
I would like to see some other quick fixes that Peggy might come up with.
Ma'am, you have to be...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We, we needed to figure out one problem at a time, sorry.
Oh, I have to, okay.
I know, I know, but, but this is the process.
I'm learning.
One problem at a time.
Are you through?
Yeah.
I have some, some of that. It, it seems to me, I, I hate to slow the whole, everything down. It seems to me if we put some further teeth somehow into the, the first issue with the concrete and the itself, and put a little more, if we can put the burden on the, on the developer or the business owner like CBS to do this, it's supposed to be done annually, they're breaking the rules, right?
Yes, sir, and we make them enter into an agreement so that they are required to do that. We have a very detailed specification. We have people who are trained to go out and inspect that, they have, our inspectors have certifications. It requires a special person with a certification to install the pervious concrete. I, CBS is the only example that I know of, and where this has, in an issue with it actually being completely paved over, and I don't know what you do stopping people going a hundred miles at ninety-five, and I don't know what you do with people who pave things over without a permit. We have to deal with it through that process.
That's my point. If they're going to break the ordinance or the law or something, that, that's a separate issue. You can put all the rules you want in, you can put all the things in, but if, as you are saying now, that we've got code enforcement on it, and they're going to be, you know, in front of code enforcement, they're going to have to do something, obviously, to make it right again.
Yes, sir.
And I think as, as that word gets around, it's, it's like putting a police car in the middle of the street, so people will slow down with a policeman. I think that word will get around, and hopefully, that will make other people take more note of the law and so forth, and I think that's more effective, and just because we're, we're going to write down some things, I hate to hold up the whole other process and this process, so. But this is the first reading, so nothing's going to happen tonight. We're all going to come back and talk about it again, so everybody has a chance to think about it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other cards?
Yes, sir, Kathleen Gerson.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, please come back, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. We have another question.
It's more of a comment, and I really appreciate everything that you're doing, but as I said previously, in previous meetings, this requirements creep is, is going to kill you. You're asking for something, we're dealing with trees, and now we got this LID thing, it's going to slow the, the process down, and then there's going to be a lot of unhappy people because we didn't do what we thought we were going to do six months ago or a year ago. I'm really want us to focus on what we said we were going to do, which is to take care of the trees. I understand the pervious thing, I think it needs to be done, but when you start combining stuff like this, there's going to be people coming out of the woodwork and say, you want to do this, this, and this, and you're not going to get anything done. So, I am really asking council to really think about us, just focus on what we say we're going to do, get it done, low-hanging fruit, and then go to this thing. If you want to combine these things later on, let's do it, but at least you will have the requirements for each one of the things that you're concerned with in a separate thing, and we can go forward. That's my suggestion that we should... That's my suggestion that we should, that the council should think about, in my mind.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The pervious pavement was included as an LID strategy, so that kind of opened up the topic of LID strategy. So it wasn't specifically a tree ordinance, it was an LID ordinance, and so that kind of opened that wide open.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Burson?
Kathleen Burson, Titusville, Florida, landscape architect, and I specialize in low-impact development. So I just want to clarify, I talked with Michael Majak, and I think I heard Ms. Ange, St. Ange, kind of say that, yes, we do agree with you, Mr. Jordan, Councilmember Jordan, that we want the tree ordinance to be independent, priority number one, let's get it done, and then we can put together the LID ordinance. Low-impact development is much more than just pervious pavement, so that's the reason. And I, I think that's what Ms. Ange was, St. Ange was trying to say, but it's just, you know, it's black water treatment, it's gray water treatment, it's rain gardens, it's pervious pavement, it's, you know, just, it's a whole number of things. So that, it is a totally different ordinance, and their tree ordinance can work with it, but it doesn't have to be together. So let's go with the original plan. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, go on.
Yeah, just to clarify, because that's where I started, you rotate back. And that was, and that was where I said, we were trying to focus on the trees, and we don't want to get it muddled. And I just, you know, and again, I was asking, trying to get that side of the view, because maybe I'm not as informed, but I do know that we started off with many hours, it seemed like, of speaking about the tree ordinance. And we didn't want to cut them all down and all that. And then we talked about, we want to get something out there, and I think, so what you're saying now is, yes, let's get the tree ordinance out there, let's get something done with trees, and move on to the next.
Keep it simple, yep.
I'm just really trying to understand where you guys are coming from.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking.
So, and, and so the clarification is, we would like to get something done with the trees, and then, and what's pervious, move forward. Okay, I feel better about that now. I was getting really confused.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Busaka, you've heard a lot here this evening. Are you, do you have any questions? Because there are, while they're very close, I'm not sure that everybody's saying the same thing.
I think, I think I understand that we're going to come back next week. I'm going to provide you some additional information on pervious pavement. You'll make a decision then. We're still on track to have the tree ordinance brought to you in January, and the LID will take a little longer.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, next item, please.
Next item is Item C, Ordinance Number 41, 2019, reinstatement of deferred retirement option plan, drop for general employees. Ordinance Number 41, 2019, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 15, Pensions and Retirement, Article 2, General Employees Pension Plan of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Titusville, amending Section 15-105, Benefits, effective August 26, 2013, amending Section 15-110, Deferred Retirement Option Plan, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing perseverance of provisions, and providing an effective date.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 41, 2019. Your next second reading and final public hearing will be at your 26 November 2018 meeting at 6:30.
Staff, have any comments? Council, anybody wish to speak? Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is first reading, does not require anything further. Old business, we have no old business, new business.
Item 12A. On October 22, 2019, a member of the Titusville Environmental Commission requested that the TEC become more involved in the development review process. It should be noted that this is a formal, this is not a formal request of the TEC, although it may reflect the desires of the commission members. Staff has provided a listing of responsibilities as described in Section 31-121 of the Code, as compared with specific duties provided for the Planning and Zoning Commission, Section 3131. Code excerpts are attached. Also attached is a brief description of various development review processes with a description of the review responsibilities as contained within the floor statutes and the city code. Staff is asking council to provide directions to staff regarding the roles and responsibilities in the development review process for TEC.
Mr. Jordan.
I just, you know, my belief is that the last thing the city needs is to have our processes just prolonged, where we're trying to develop positive things in this, in the city, and to have another committee look at some things that I believe we have in our process now is enough. I've always believed that if, if we're going to add something, then we need to take something away. We shouldn't be a group that's just looking to just heap on more requirements to a developer or any member of the public who wants to develop something in the city. So I, I, I'm not interested in advisability to tell me that we need to have or not have another committee to add to the process already, so I'll leave it up to the council to decide what they want to do. But my vote would be noted to add more to our process.
Thank you, sir. Member Stokel.
Yep. My thoughts when I first saw this item was, I feel like we do have the appropriate process in place by having Brian Bobbitt sit on both boards. I feel like that's the reasoning behind why that was even created originally. So I think that we have the proper process in place correctly, and I'm hopeful that, moving forward, it should suffice.
Member Nelson.
Okay. My, this is going to be my suggestion. We have Ryan Bobbitt on planning and zoning, and so my suggestion is, if he sees an item that needs to go before TEC, let it go before TEC. We have a number of experts on TEC. We have engineers, we have marine biologists, we have environmental engineers. They are people that have offered to give us advice. We're not paying for it. They're giving it to us for, for free, and they are, they're experts. So, and this is, this is one of the reasons why. Our statute, our ordinance says, where is it? It talks about Titusville Environmental Commission shall study the general environmental conditions and around the city of Titusville, make specific recommendations to the city council regarding certain projects, and it includes development. So I don't think every, every, every development needs to go before the Titusville Environmental Commission. But if Mr. Bobbitt is sitting there and says, gee, this is something that maybe we could use additional information on, then I, I think if planning and zoning agrees with him, that it goes to the Titusville Environmental Commission. That being said, I do think we have to give them a time limit and say, okay, you need to report back to planning and zoning within a certain period of time, and that information needs to come to us. So that's how I sort of envision it, and that fits in with the ordinance we already have.
Mr. City Attorney, sir? Does that create any procedural problems with Mr. Bobbitt? I know it's not a sunshine item, but I'm just saying, if there's no other, no filter there, or anybody else to intercede, then it's a lot of...
I'm not sure.
I'm speaking, okay?
Okay.
It's, it's a lot of power in, in one person's hands to make decisions of bringing stuff back and forth, and I, have you dealt with anything of this type before, or?
No, sir, but, but I do believe that there are issues that if planning and zoning wants input from the commission, it would have to go to the entire commission. It would not be Mr. Bobbitt doing that correspondence back and forth. Of course, he could provide updates between the boards on agenda items, what is P and Z's interest, and convey that. You know, they could say, we'd like them to look at it, and he could certainly convey that. But any discussion on those items would certainly have to happen as a board and be presented by that board back to the planning and zoning. So, in my opinion, that, it would need to happen that way. Wouldn't be Mr. Bobbitt's interpretation. It would be a report from that board that he could then bring to P and Z, or they would send to P and Z, but it would not be his interpretation, it would be the report from that board.
Okay, I just would request that we make sure that Mr. Bobbitt understands that procedure.
Yes, sir.
Now, who's next? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The concern I have, and I kind of hear what the attorney is saying, but my, my big concern is that, and I'm not even going to speak to Mr. Bobbitt, because I think it's a committee requirement, because if you've got a planning and zoning, there is a timeline when these projects, projects are trying to get off the, the ground, and if you've got a P and Z who is ready to make a decision and decides, no, I'm not going to make a decision because someone said, well, we need to go to the TEC, then now they're going to table the thing, it's going to go to the TEC. How long are they going to have the thing? How often do they meet? You know, it's going to be another two weeks, four weeks before they meet, and then it's going to have to come back to the P and Z, and it could just prolong the whole process. And then, of course, my question would be, based on me putting the permit in, how long am I going to have to wait? Or am I going to be held hostage until TEC decides, yeah, this is a good project or not? And I just don't think that's the way we should run this thing, for sure, so.
Member Nelson.
I don't think the question is, does TEC approve the project or not? The question is, does TEC see problems in the project? And I think that's what they're passing on to planning and zoning. That we see this as a, a problem in this project, you might need to be aware of it. And TEC is supposed to meet every month, but we have special meetings all the time, so if there's something that needs to come before them sooner, there's really not any reason it can't come before them sooner. Or they can have a special meeting, I would think. I might ask Peggy, is there a reason they can't have a special meeting?
Well, it would really depend on, can we get a quorum? That's always the first, but also, can we get a meeting room?
Okay.
You know, so sometimes we just have to do the, you know, sometimes it doesn't work as well as we would like it to. But we would, we could certainly do that if, if that's what council wants, we would do our best, obviously, to move it as quickly as possible. I do have a couple of questions in what I've heard. I'm sorry.
Before you do that, I just want to go back to what Mr. Jordan said. I, I agree with what you're saying, and I want you to make, take special note of that, because it's kind of what I was saying. I'm concerned that things, and you said it too.
Yeah, right on.
That things are slowed down, and we're just getting to the point, and we're, where we've got a lot going on, and more coming down the pike, and I wanted to make sure that whatever we do, it gets done expeditiously. And you said it, and you said it, so that should be, and I don't, you both agree with that concept? I mean, that we expedite things?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Basically.
And I was following up with you guys, yeah, exactly. And it's a, it's a tough situation when you start depending on one board to approve another board. That's where I get confused. I would certainly think, and I've heard Mike say this, and there are certainly issues that come before P and Z that are environmental, and there needs to be some environmental input. I don't, I think that's a good thing, environmental input, but I don't think it's a good thing to have one commission or a board waiting on another's approval. That could really get tricky. But I don't want to eliminate the possibility of, how can we get environmental input without crossing boards? That's my concern. I agree with what you're saying.
Member Stokel.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going with it. I feel like we're adding almost too many layers at that point. I feel like planning and zoning's on there, and again, going back to the role that Mr. Bobbitt plays on there, it's not that he's necessarily representing the entire committee, but he's offering that viewpoint as part of P and Z board, and I think that's what we were going at, to prevent so many layers. So certainly, again, and just looking at this, I feel like, I guess it's up to us what we see our vision of the environmental commission. I see it more broad in terms of the tree ordinance, of lagoon issues, of development, what types of development, not specific projects, I guess, is my concern. So that's my viewpoint on it, so I just don't think it's needed at this time.
I want to make something clear before we go. My comments, and I don't think anybody else's comments, had anything to do with Mr. Bobbitt, and I'm not saying yours did, I'm saying, I want to make it clear to Mr. Bobbitt, we're discussing a procedure, he just happens to be the one that'll have to carry it out. But it has nothing to do with him or his capabilities or abilities, so, okay. You, this, you had this up here before, you want to?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Member Nelson.
And I just want to reiterate that I don't see TEC's role as approving, having to put a stamp of approval on a plan and saying, yeah, we're approving this. I, I see their role as looking at it, sending a report to planning and zoning and saying, hey, this may be a concern, look at it, and this is why we think it's a concern. And to me, that's, that's something that if, if there is concern with the development, we need to know it, staff needs to know it. So I, I don't want to slow it down, but if there is a problem with development, I really would like to see TEC have some, some input, and that's what our ordinance is, they're supposed to do.
Again, I have no problem with the concept. It's the execution that concerns me. So, yeah, it, it, both boards should always remember their advisory to us. Their, whatever they come up with, we take in full consideration, and we should, and that, but we make the final decision. Sometimes it seems like that gets lost as well. But City Attorney.
Member Nelson touched on mine. I just want to point out, I'd heard the comments about approval, approval. It's not an approval, it's recommendations. So you wouldn't be waiting for approval from TEC, it'd be recommendations that would go to the board for consideration. I just want to clarify that. And Member Nelson clarified that.
I think I just did hope so. But Vice Mayor.
Yeah, pretty much, you surmised what I was saying earlier. I want them to have input, and you've stated it in perhaps, you know, a written concern, and then planning and zoning can read that, consider that, but move forward. I, that's what I'm looking for, the input part, because that just makes sense, and as you said, it's an ordinance. But what I don't want is paralysis with analysis. You know, well, you know, well, what can we do this? You know, if they get that input, then they go back and say, well, now we've got to go back and say, well, we're not sure what that means. What, and then, then I don't want to get us stuck in that, and as Mayor said, it's, it's the execution that's the concern to me, because I definitely feel like they should, and by ordinance should have input, and that's why we have them, on some, on top of some of the things Member Stokel said. But I don't, again, want to get caught up in the ping pong battle, and not even a battle, but a ping pong game of, okay, here's what we think you need to do, and then they come back and say, well, what, what do you suggest then? And I don't want this back and forth, we've got to move. But I do want them to have input.
Mr. Busaka, you're up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you. I would, I really would, I've heard the word projects, and I've heard ordinances, and those are not the same. The only projects that go forward to the P and Z are currently rezonings, conditional use permits, master plans, development agreements, sketch plaits. Is that what you're talking about, or are you talking about the pervious pavement ordinance? That would, because those are two different things, and they have due different processes, and so I, I just want to understand exactly what you want staff to do.
So we totally confused you, right?
Not totally, but I'm a little confused.
Well, and I understand it, but you, you are very correct, of course, in what, what you said, and that's why we go back to the initial thing with the pervious concrete. That's, that's not a... that's, that's not a, that's an ordinance that people have to follow, and if they follow the ordinance and don't repave it or something or other, then it's, it's not an issue. That's, that's not a, something that should be battered back and forth, I guess, and I think we're all saying that same thing, so. You're up again. Member Nelson?
I'm sitting here reading. I'm sorry.
Well, that's all right. Want me to come back to you?
You may not.
I'll do something on this subject, all right? Okay.
It says, make recommendations, I'm sorry about that.
Make recommendations to the City Council regarding the environmental effects of existing conditions, future public and private development projects. I mean, this is, this is, I'm not sure who wrote this ordinance, so I'm not sure who we, who we blame. Subjects of particular environmental water resource concern, and issues regarding environmental sustainability in order to improve information available to the City Council in their decision-making role. Does that make it clear?
I, I would really like to understand how this council would like us to do this.
And we're looking to your expertise to help us make that decision.
Well, what I read in this is that they make recommendations to the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council on Environmental Water Resources and Environmental Sustainability Issues pertaining to the adopted comprehensive plan. So when the 2040 comp plan, the environmental portion of that went to the T E C.
Right.
Okay. Then I read waterfront issues throughout the city, review environmental water resources issues as selected by staff.
Right.
And then I read recommendations to the City Council on Environmental Sustainability, which to me is a broader issue. Establish Tree City, public hearings for the implementation of their duties, that the City Council reserves the right to determine the projects or issues to be reviewed. So that's what I read, so.
I think the problem is, well, the first part of it talks, is the language I, I read, but A is basically, we reserve the right to determine projects or issues to be reviewed, but the problem is, are we going to know what those projects and issues that need to be reviewed are? I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a good tree hugger, but if you ask me about water quality, I, I couldn't.
Well, if, if you would like, we can do our very best to give you several options for how this process could work, and you could table this issue. I don't have any good ideas tonight, and the staff may slash my tires tomorrow for suggesting that we have good ideas, but we can do our best.
Do you always have good ideas, Peggy?
I just have quantity, not necessarily quality, of ideas. So if you want to table this and us to give you various options as to how this could work, I could certainly do our best. I'm not sure it'll get back on the agenda at the next meeting, because the agenda deadline is Friday.
Okay.
And this is Tuesday. So it may, if you want to do it on the next meeting, in the first meeting in December, then we can, I'd be happy to bring back to you options. We can have, their, T E C is having a meeting, we could ask their input as well as the P and Z input, and that.
That would help.
So we could, we could do that, if that's what you'd like.
Can I?
Before I call the, the next light, one of the things I would say, and I think we're probably all in agreement, the word recommendation, I would like to see in there wherever it's proper, and make sure that there's no confusion about that issue. I think that'll help a lot. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, the more I talk, the more I'm like, I'm not sure where we're going. Even I said that the environmental, there are certain issues that P and Z overlooks and advises to us, couldn't use the word overlook, advises on to us, that environmental would be a very big benefit. Well, now, the question to even myself is, which ones? You know, certain situat, which ones? And who decides that? I mean, I think right now, the Brian Bobbitt liaison may be the best thing we have going. You have somebody who's on the P and Z saying, hey, you know what, I'm with environmental, and I think that that's something we need some input on. Otherwise, who do we have policing what input there is unless we have more environmental people going to every P and Z meeting? I think it gets real complicated, and I'm digressing on what I said. Certain issues that environmental should be advising on. I agree. Which ones? And who decides that? And how long does it take to decide that and get it to environmental, to get the input back to P and Z? So, yeah, I think that right now, we may want to think about it, table it, and right now, the liaison may be the best thing we have going. Because again, I'm, I'm definitely feeling environmental, there's issues out there that environmental needs to have input, advisement. But if we're going to have them do that with P and Z, which ones, and what's the turnaround time?
Member Stokel.
Just thinking out loud here, maybe a good compromise would be any issues that potentially do go before P and Z. If they have, and this is a criteria that we have yet to decide, any environmental concerns, they go to T E C at the same time, and then both, we get a report from P and Z and a report from T E C, to be more efficient, rather than it going to P and Z. Just an idea. So that would be, we wouldn't be adding on to the process, and T E C can still look at it, and P and Z, at the same time that P and Z is looking at it. That's just an idea that just popped in my head.
Thank you. Member Nelson?
I promise this is the last comment. And I thought about that. T E C right now is meeting once a month, and P and Z is meeting twice a month, so that's why I asked Peggy if, if they could have special meetings if we needed to, because I'm not expecting everything to go to T E C.
Ms. Busaka, I thought I heard you read that staff decides if we need to send something to T E C. Did I read that wrong?
I can. This is number four, to review environmental water resource issues as selected by staff, and submits the Planning and Zoning Commission as a part of applications for rezoning, conditional use permits, et cetera, and make recommendations to the Planning, Zoning Commission on said environmental issues.
Why do we need more? We don't need any more, to be honest with you. I think we got the process in place, and I think you should work the process.
But that may not be as easy, easily done, as said, so. I think we have to let Ms. Busaka take a, she's heard all of our input at this point. I don't know how much more we can say. I think our basic idea is the same, make this thing, make sure this thing goes along swiftly, and that bog, doesn't bog down. How to do that, I think we have to rely on Ms. Busaka's amazing ability to make things magically happen. You do have, I don't think we need a motion on this, because I think you, I don't think there is a motion, impossible, frankly.
Mayor, you do have two cards on this item.
Have some cards?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I was still talking to Ms. Busaka, though. So, you know, after we get done with the rest, but I, I think you've got the idea where we're going. Cards, please.
Michael Majak and then Kathleen Burson.
In the interest of saving time?
No double teaming allowed. Nah, nah, it's cheating. You already got a big stick, what else you need, Mike?
I think the process is broken, and, and I think it's broken particularly where we ask the question, what trees are we going to save? Which ones are we not going to remove? Are there any that we're not going to remove? And yes, we should start the mitigation of five or six inches in everything up. That kind of mitigation penalty will make them think twice about wanting to take out trees. But the process part of it, and Brookshire was, was just a classic case in point, there were many environmental concerns, and they all fell by the wayside along the path. The only place that the tree survey comes into play is at the very beginning, and sometimes, literally, before that sketch plat is even conceived. They need to get it done, they know what they need to turn in to get started. It's really a question of what is on the property that they can leave for the rest of us in the city? Any of it? We've already seen 90% clearing, and while granted, it's not 100% total vegetation removal, it's not leaving any of those stately trees that we need, that our city benefits from. So that question right up the front, what trees are going to stay, what trees are going to leave, what wetlands are going to remain, which ones I have to mitigate, or am I going to keep all my stormwater on site? These are the kinds of questions that the T E C is best suited to answer, to work with. We want to see no stormwater making it into the Indian River Lagoon. That's how we save the lagoon. We do that with low-impact development. We do that with structured wetlands. We do that with the lands that we develop. We've only got about 5,000 acres left. So my question is, what happens when all of that's gone? You know, the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, when they came and did our, our vision plan, said that we need to be a small town, and re-envision ourselves as a small town with amenities for its residents. Okay? That's not new houses for people who are living elsewhere. That's an impact to our city. That costs us in our infrastructure. It may not cost us today, but if you add 500 homes here and 100 homes there, eventually the bus, the main lines, need to be increased. Those developers aren't paying that impact. That comes out of all of us, out of our taxes. So I ask you, think about making the process equivalent between T E C and the planning and zoning. We do them in parallel. We meet twice a month. We used to meet twice a month. If we do the same things and we see the same work, we'll get there, I do believe. That's my, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Good evening. Kathleen Burson, landscape architect, Titusville, Florida. Thank you so much for discussing this. We have needed this for years. There's been some very big environmental issues that have just washed by the wayside, or, you know, we've spent, been here till 2:00 o'clock in the morning fighting for, you know, trees and tortoises and such, in the Indian River Lagoon. So I think you guys have a great start at the topic, and let's just keep it simple, like Mr. Majak said. The T E C can meet twice a month, and be right on schedule, it won't be any special meetings, they'll just be right on it, and you'll get a report from both the T E C and the P and Z, and we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other cards?
Yes.
Okay. That was easy.
Yeah. That's what we do.
[inaudible]
Where, okay, that was, next, next item, City Manager's seat.
Next is advisability of having a special magistrate versus municipal enforcement code board. At the October 22, 2019, City Council meeting, staff was directed to research and provide information on having a special magistrate versus a municipal code enforcement board. We have to prepare a report, it's in your packet. We have Glenn Tolleson, our code enforcement manager, available to answer any questions, and staff is asking you to accept the report and provide direction regarding an ordinance change, or providing a code enforcement special magistrate.
I'm going to jump in on this one. I'm sure everybody read the statistics out there as to what percentage are using magistrates, how that's working out, and et cetera, et cetera. It seems to me pretty clear that it is the preferred methodology in the state of Florida, at least, to use magistrates. I think we have seen the difference since we got away from magistrates. So my, my recommendation is certainly to look at that magistrate situation very carefully, and it appears to me that's the best way to go, but I'll defer now to Member Stokel.
Yep, thank you. And I was looking at the report as well. I think before going that route, though, I would prefer to perhaps get some training for our code enforcement board. I think that we've all seen some good and bad come from the board, and my concern would be, I don't know, I like having the board, I like having that layer, I like having those perspectives of our Titusville residents on there. I just feel that I would like to give them the opportunity to get some training on understanding their role a little bit better, and if that doesn't work, I would like to go in the direction. I just, I'm not quite sold on the magistrate idea just yet.
And I'm just going to make one quick comment. What I saw was some, more legal training was needed than anything else, and I don't see how we can give them that training. A magistrate has that training and understands that it's not opinions, it's, it's the law that they've got to do. Individual people, and believe me, I had a conversation that would prove that. How can we make lawyers out of them? Lawyers are very special people, aren't they? That's all right.
Thank you, Mayor.
And they had a long education.
You put that on my.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, boy.
I'll write it, I'll do it.
You'll write it?
Yeah, so anyway, what I'm saying is, it's not just as easy as giving them additional instructions, we'd almost have to give them, in my estimation, a law, a law degree, because what I saw at that last meeting was a bunch, a bunch of opinions, sorry, a bunch of opinions that had nothing to do with the law, and had nothing to do with what they're supposed to be doing.
I would.
So, okay, all right, we're on that. Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Member Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm with you on, on this. I think the magistrate is, is the right way to go, and we already have an attorney at the, the meetings as it is, and I think you couldn't end up saving money if you do this. But you also, in my mind, the liability is decreased, because when we have the committee, if you will, it's, it's more of opinions than anything, and they can vote on anything, and turns out, I'm going to sue you for what you, you have just voted on. So I think we, that the city would be better off, in my opinion, having a magistrate versus the committee we have now. But I, I respect what Member Stokel says, but I think this specific committee would do well if it was a magistrate instead of representatives from the public, in my mind.
And remember, everyone, that, that we don't have any sway over their decision, it goes to court. And as you said, that's a very expensive procedure. Whatever they do, we, we can't even enter into it or give an opinion on it. Member Nelson?
Well, I sort of have two opinions. I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's a lawyer in me. You know, part of me is with Sarah. I like the idea of commission, because I like the idea of our citizens being involved, hopefully appropriately, involved in the decision-making process, and I think sometimes they have a little more compassion for their fellow citizens. And I have worked with some judges who will remain nameless, and that hasn't always been the best solution either. And I will say this, because this person is And I will say this because this person is no longer around, but he one time told a kid to tell him what he did and he would tell him whether he was guilty or not. So, you know, sometimes, if we get a good magistrate, it's good. And I did talk to a friend of mine who's assistant county attorney and she loves having a magistrate. Part of me says, if we have a good magistrate, we're good. If we don't have a good magistrate, we're in trouble. If we decide that we want a magistrate, I would ask that we have one of the members from code enforcement on that board or on that review committee. I think the chairman is Pat Bell, just so that they have some input into that also. So, I'm not sure.
I have a question for the City Manager. If a magistrate comes and we don't think it's the right person for the job, again, we let them go or is there some?
Absolutely.
They work at the pleasure of the board?
Yes, sir.
So that's a check. And also, can they be put on a certain trial basis?
Trial basis?
I heard that come out and I knew I was going to get.
Trial basis? That was going to, we would put out a proposal.
Temporary basis.
Um. Probationary period? You probably don't want to do that.
Probationary period.
I'll let the City Attorney answer that for you.
If you have discretion, I would say their entire job is a trial basis, you know. Anytime you're not happy, you can terminate that job. So in a sense, they're always on.
The first six months or so would tell us something about the person, whether we designated it or not, at any period, I guess we can take action.
Correct. And if the direction is to craft an ordinance to come back to allow a magistrate, we certainly, within that ordinance, could put some criteria on the type of magistrate, years of practice, experience with other boards. You could develop some criteria by which you would filter out the candidate pool, if you will.
And it was also mentioned about sympathy from the people. Well, it works the other way, too. Sometimes there's no logic, no sympathy. It's shoot them all and let God create.
Sometimes I think it's a roll of the dice. Either way.
That might even be better than a preconceived notion as to what's going on. But anyway, I totally agree with Member Jordan that a magistrate, and I think some others, I just, we can't keep training people on law. Every time, we'd have to send them to college for six months before we put them on the board. I mean, that's the way I see it, anyway. Member Diesel.
Did we, Vice Mayor. Did we not, wasn't this item on the agenda for the code enforcement?
It was, yes.
From what I understand, there was really no response, there was?
I'll defer to Mr. Tolleson because I believe he was at the meeting.
Yes, sir. Actually, we met yesterday and I informed him that I had prepared the agenda at the direction of the council and I'd be delivering it tonight and answering any questions. And I asked him would they be interested in me providing the email to them tomorrow with tonight's meeting and there was no response to that.
And I heard that. I got word of that and that, I don't say concerned me, but it kind of gave me a peek into, they weren't that concerned about not meeting anymore. And if they are, I would like to have heard from them or heard that, but I'm not hearing that because, you know, I'm a little bit like Member Nelson and I think all of us to some degree, whatever we've said, we have a deep appreciation for all of our boards.
Absolutely.
We realize that that's a real tough board. I like the idea of citizens, Titusville citizens on there, but I also like the idea of, you know, it's kind of the judge and jury thing. Well, in this case, we go to the judge and we don't have the whole, you know, debate and probably expediate things to some degree. I would also agree with Member Nelson, it better be a good one, but I like the follow-up from the mayor, we don't have to hold on to one that's not getting it done. I'm leaning towards the magistrate for several reasons, but one of them is when we gave them the opportunity to go down the line and say, you know what, we'd really like to stay here. We think we're doing a good job. For some reason, that didn't come out and you gave them every opportunity to do that. And I may get a lot of emails now, but I, you know, I would really like to have, you know, maybe somebody was concerned enough from that board that they came here and told us what they felt. But as far as efficiency, and I use this term a lot, but eliminating all paralysis with analysis, here we go. I think that, you know, the, get rid of a lot of gray area when you have a magistrate. I'll just leave it at that.
You're up. We haven't heard from you. I'd like to know what your thoughts are.
Thank you, sir. Actually, I've been in front of both and they are both phenomenal at times and both not as great at other times. As far as the code enforcement side, yes, we would prefer special magistrate for us due to the fact that there is a lot of times that you take various things in front of the board and we spend a lot of time trying to explain what the city's intent is and it may not always get sent back to that definition. That is one of the downsides is when we go back and forth, like what's the difference between a road or driveway? You spend a lot of time when basically you're there just to talk about, was a permit issued, yes or no? And we get hung up in those sometimes. But historically, the code board's been very, very good in this city and they deserve that credit. But as you can see by the numbers, and I've talked to several managers throughout the state and everyone is going towards the magistrates now. There are some have actually started implementing a citation program. I'm not sure exactly how that all works yet. I do know that with magistrates, however, there can only be a magistrate for one city. I did find that out. So a lot of them are, as you can see by the numbers, a lot of your municipal attorneys are getting moved towards those positions now. And I know that Ponsonlet is going forward and there's, there are advantages to both and there's disadvantages as well. Like I said, for us, it is going to be some cost savings and of course, this whole project started a year ago for us. We were actually able, through a lean-six project, to reduce last year's budget by about $6,000 in things we've made. And that going to a special magistrate would actually even be an additional cost savings because we're not going to spend those amount of time on the hearings.
Very good.
So to answer your question, yes, sir, we would prefer the magistrate.
Okay. And I appreciate that. The question I have for the City Attorney is, the qualifications for an attorney, what is that, for a magistrate, what is that?
Of course, to be an attorney with Florida bar, usually you could have, you know, five years' experience in work and we could create some additional criteria that we feel, and we'd bring that back to you. What we feel would be appropriate to have someone knowledgeable and experienced in local government and in magistrate process.
Okay.
As referenced, you know, that pool's probably not a real big one.
Right, right, right.
And others are certainly filling those roles for other cities. So I can't guarantee that, you know, how quick we'd be able to get a magistrate on board, of course, but if that's your direction, we will come back with some criteria and build that into the code for consideration.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Member Stokel.
Yep. Still sticking to my original viewpoint. My fear is that, just because I feel that our code enforcement board is, I believe, not working in the direction that I feel they should be, we're changing policy and process rather than fixing the issues there, would be my concern. But I still like the Titusville residents. I like the people that are in our community making those decisions. And I agree, I think historically, it has been good in the past and I wish it was there right now. I don't think it is, but.
Sarah, we had a magistrate for how many years?
That would have been many years before my, you know, we.
Yeah, that's, that's probably before my time as well.
Not mine, obviously.
Well, I know we've had, you know, the board for more than 20 years, 25. So prior to that, you know, we had a, I think Mr. Allender actually was an attorney and we'd bring things before him and had the city court. But we've had a code board for, you know, more than 20 years.
Yeah. My point is, it appears that, especially with, yes, our recent experiences is why we're re-looking at it very carefully, but I, to me, it's just, I see it happening all over and I understand what you're saying and I feel the same way. They're great people, Muslim for doing it, but they just don't have the knowledge base. And we can't, you know, they turn, there's a turnover there and we'd have to send them to college to just get the basics of the law. So anyway, I'll leave it at that. But I don't disagree with you, that, I understand where you're coming from. They're nice people. I think our boards are great, the fact that they volunteer their time and 99% of them try to do the best job and not get personally involved in everything, but it doesn't always work that way. And in this case, we got nothing we can do about it. After they, if something up, it goes to court. That's all. Anything else? Vice Mayor.
We spoke about if they're not doing a good job, we can roll on from them. Then it crossed my mind, what if something happens where they're ill or they get a better offer and they leave? Do we have a backup or does everything come to a halt?
If you, if you decide to go the magistrate process, a lot of cities will have a, not only hire a magistrate, but they'll have a second, an alternate in that event. So to the extent you're able to have more than one or two or three that you feel work, you could hire one on an alternate basis to fill in, like you would have an alternate code board member, that in the event your magistrate is sick, now they only meet once a month, but in the event he is on vacation or is sick or hurt at that time, you can have an alternate. But you're right, if neither can fill that, just like not having a quorum, then you would have to table every item to the next month when they are available.
Yeah, and that, of course, was across my mind, you know, on a board, if you have one or two people out, you still have a quorum. If you've got the magistrate out, it's over. So I don't know what the historic issue was with that and I certainly wouldn't let that overly affect my vote, but it sounds like not only do we need a magistrate, we need a backup.
But that can be done. He says that can, that can be done.
No, and I get that it can't. It does take us to a, this meets once a month?
Yes, sir.
What does magistrate do the rest of the month?
Right, it's those laws.
I guess I'm really asking that, does he work another job?
Typically, most magistrates are municipal attorneys.
So this is a second job?
Yeah, yes, sir. Kind of like we have for traffic courts, you have defense attorneys that are magistrates and they hear traffic cases.
Okay, okay. Just trying to understand it. Thank you.
Correct. I just want to point out, currently, your code enforcement board has an attorney that, separate from us, we prosecute cases, they represent the board. So you have an attorney now who only comes once a month to represent that board during the meetings. And they have, you know, they have a private practice or they're contracted out, as referenced, as city attorneys for other cities or, so currently, you do have that attorney who's contracted to those meetings.
All right, very good. Member Nelson.
And I just wanted to point out, and this was a point for having a magistrate, I'm hoping that the people who are on the code enforcement board will consider other boards or consider applying for other boards. So we have sort of a pool of people that want to be involved in the city and hopefully we can get them involved.
I see no more lights. So where do we go from here? I mean, do we make a motion to proceed in one direction or the other or do you need that or do you, I don't know?
We do. If council is inclined to take steps to move toward a magistrate process, there'd be, need to be a motion to come back with an ordinance, creating that magistrate process. If you're not sure yet, you certainly could ask for more information and to come back with more information, you could table this to another meeting if you would like to have more options or more discussion. And if you're ready for a motion and want to move forward, you certainly can make that motion to bring back an ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Member Jordan.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the report and have staff provide an ordinance to change the code enforcement to a special magistrate.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Yes.
With one opposed, passes. Thank you.
Sorry. Yes. Yes for the no.
I knew that. I said with one exception.
Thanks, Glenn.
If I could just give one more update, sir? I'd like to let everyone know that I met with ABC Land Clearing this morning. They do have all of the permits in hand for the six demolitions and hope to be on-site in the morning at nine, between nine and 10 to start.
Right.
And I just wanted to share that this evening. And thank you all.
Okay, next, wherever we, oh, petitions and requests, if anybody wishes to speak? You're the only one in? No? Okay. Mayor and council reports. You have my report, the only thing that's on there, I think, that I didn't, I did, I did make, but I was a little late the other night between the rains for the downtown event. So it was, I was about 20 minutes late and I missed the first part and then everybody was leaving when I got there. So that's, that's all I have to report. Council reports, anyone?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Find out, Curtis, can you hear me? Curtis? I just want to thank Curtis, everybody knows Curtis. I was, I had the privilege of saying some words at the NAACP event and I added a PowerPoint to it and a little video and so I had to call upon the group here and Curtis came on a Saturday, set up on Saturday, stayed for the entire event to make sure we got it right. And then he ended up being part of the AV team there and he and another young lady from the NAACP pretty much ran, once I decided to go PowerPoint, they said, hey, you know what, we'll set a screen up and we'll use it, too. So Curtis actually not only helped me and he was a tremendous help to me, like I said, he stayed the whole night, but he was also a tremendous help to the NAACP event and at the end, they wanted to make sure they honored him and introduced him at the end. So I thought that was really above and beyond and it makes me feel good to know that if I need to speak somewhere and I need some help, they're there for me. I thought it went very well and a lot of the going very well had to do with their support and it was great to see us represented.
And you also, sir, if I could add, last night at your Space Coast League of Cities, Curtis was dutifully on point again.
Always, always. I was just going to say that also, but overall, we've got a great team there with the three of them, Jim and Shane and Curtis, they are amazing what they do. We saw the award they got for the putting in all that time and effort and doing something that to me was impossible, but they did it. No, we are very lucky to have that team there, so.
And just, again, just to add on to the Space Coast League of Cities, that team also publishes, prepares and publishes the Titusville Talking Points as well as the special one that we just put together. I've received multiple phone calls today from other cities of, how much does it cost you, just the inquiries.
It was the last night.
Yes, and we've been doing that publication now for a little over four years, but I think the utility of our citizens understanding what's going on in their city with that particular document and it goes hot of places because it is electronic and I would commend that team again for the efforts. It's a total team, the director's input, but it's the final polished product that they put together that I think people are excited to see every quarter.
No, it's amazingly well-done and so professionally put together that it's, you know, I used to think we sent it out to somebody or something when it first came out. I said, this is amazing and it was these guys right here. So with that, okay, where are we? Any other council reports? I was a good one.
I was just going to say, and the people in our condos fight over.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if you put five in the lobby and three seconds, they're gone.
I pass them out at, when I go to a doctor's office or a haircut or whatever. I pass them out, when I go to a doctor's office, or a haircut, or whatever, I put them there. They don't last 15 minutes. I'm there in there. Come on.
Something you want to hear, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
At the NAACP event, as you may recall, I think it was two years ago, I've got the Unsung Hero Award. Well, Willie Taylor got the Unsung Hero Award, and so that was pretty special, and I know you have a relationship with him as well, so I was very proud of him for that.
Oh, he's an amazing person, I tell you what. Okay, any other reports? I see no one. City manager?
Yes, sir, I have one action item. We, and I think we had a little discussion last night about CBG, why that date was put out and why it's canceled. You had not approved that date yet, so we would appreciate council considering the primary date of January 7th, or secondary date, which is a Thursday. We try to, try to keep you on track on Tuesdays, Thursday, January 9th at 5:00. And this is a special meeting, and people will be invited to participate in putting their costs before you for CBG funds.
Those are the dates, sir, you had in.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Fine with me.
So, everybody go north-south on the 7th, then? I mean, shake yes.
Yeah, I'm good with the 7th. I just had a question. Do we meet for this twice?
Yes, we do.
Do we, do we know the second date yet?
Yeah, it'll be a regular council meeting.
At a regular council meeting, so this would be the only special one. Okay, perfect, and I'm fine with the 7th.
Okay. See no other lights there? Any other, anything else?
Just the schedule of events. Again, we're already preparing for the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, and the Christmas parade is well underway. And one, just as a reminder, we have one meeting only in the month of December, so you have two meetings left for the rest of the year. Just put it all in perspective.
City attorney, anything? All right. With that, I see no other lights, declare this meeting adjourned.